Good afternoon, everyone, to all those. To all those logged on to the Public Defender Service Corporation Board of Trustees Regular Meeting of June 28, 2022. At this time, I would like the Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Chief Justice F. Philip Carvalho.
I am present and I'm logged on from the Judicial Center in Hagatia.
Presiding Judge Alberthel C. Lomarino III.
I am present and I'm at the Judicial Center in Hagatia.
Trustee Cynthia E. Q. B.
Buenos and Hafa Day, your honors and everyone. Cynthia E. Q. B. here, present in Hagatia at my law office. Thank you.
Trustee Donna Munya Caneta.
Hafa Day, everyone. I'm present here at my office in East of Gania, Guam, model spot.
Juanmar President Jackie T. Tomlin.
I note that we have four of our five members present and that we have a quorum and we're able to conduct the regular business of the corporation per the program agenda that have been provided to us. So because we are live streaming, PJ, I just want to note your, your video. You're kind of.
It's messed up.
Yeah, so you, you might want to stop your video and then try to right side it, right size it. Okay, so it will, and maybe someone can assist you.
Yeah, I've just called it my bailiff. Okay, I will be just for the, I will be here in, on audio.
Yes, yes, and I will note that for the record and we see your icon and so you are present and participating. With that, the first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 26, 2022. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion. Yeah.
All right.
Donna?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, make the motion. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Donna Caneta and it's been seconded by presiding judge Lemarino. Are there any questions regarding the minutes? There being none, before I call the vote, I'd like to note for the record that trustee Jackie Turlahe, president of the Guam Bar Association is present. And so we have all five members present and accounted for. So on the motion to adopt the minutes as moved and seconded, all those in favor, please, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, the minutes have, has been unanimous, have, has been unanimously adopted. The first item under all business is a financial status update of our vote, the Public Defender Service Corporation, all three APD and the DVP. And, and regarding their allotment releases, and I'll recognize Mr. Michael Moreno. Our, okay, Ms. Kathy Gogli, you are recognized.
Thank you, your honor. Our CFO is on leave, so you have me to provide the financial update. As of today, the public defender and alternate public defender are at 90% of what we requested for our allotment from DOA. So we thought we would request it at 98%. Regarding DVP, as of today, funding for stock 2019 and stock 20, we still have a balance for stock 2019 at $6,927. And for stock 2020, we have $3,376.50 for both of these accounts. For stock 2018, such as soft, the balance remaining is $4,000. So we'll continue to charge against these amounts for our DVP program. Or now it's called the Advocacy Center and reimbursement will be done accordingly. For the ICJR, which is Improving Criminal Justice Response Grant, we have a total of $118,298.69 in this account, and we will not use this until the exhaust stock 20 and 21, which we expect to do that in June of 2022. Regarding the Elder Justice Center, as of today, we have received money for October, December, and partially for January. We're waiting for money for November, all the way up until from January to May. And I know that this might be of concern to the board, but what had happened was we had a second amendment to our MOU. And so after our amendment has gone through the process of public count and then the AG's office, and the accounts are now set up properly with DOA, we hope that our money that we have built for will come in steadily, so we don't see a problem with our reimbursement from public count.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Any questions regarding the report that our board secretary has just presented? Let me, let me just comment it then, you know, because of the substantial advance that the corporation is making on behalf of the Elder Justice Center, of course, subject to reimbursement, which you say there are no issues. We should be a little more proactive when we renew the agreement, should, you know, that be the Department of Public Health's desire. And so maybe we can initiate that at least 30, 60 days prior. Or at least inquire, I don't know if we can obtain all the signatures necessarily, but I think we should just make an effort to see if this, we can avoid a similar instance of being several months in arrears and as a result, from what I understand your explanation, it's just processing the paperwork.
Correct, correct, Your Honor. And we will continue when we do our follow-ups with public count, and we've got a really great relationship with them. They assure us that we will get paid, so we're, we on the management side of the house, we're not too worried about reimbursement.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the report of the Executive Director of the Public Defender Service Corporation, Mr. Steve Hattori. And Steve, I know that you've provided the board members with your quarterly report. And, but you know, members of the public that may be logging on do not have a copy of the report, so I do want you to summarize the report that you have provided, and that will also apply to the APD and our Elder Justice Center. And summarize the information there. And then, and, and in particular for me, you can just note the reasons for the discrepancies in the number of cases, you know, from a low of 56 to for individual lawyers to a high of 157, I think you may even have more, you know, 200. So, so it just seems that the distribution of the workload, at least from the numbers, are skewed. And, and maybe you can provide some explanation for that. But with that, I ask that you just summarize the information that you have provided to the trustees.
Okay, thank you, Chief Justice. Welcome aboard. So page 11 of 19 really is our year-to-date stats on the number of cases we received. Basically, we received 600 felonies, 374 misdemeanors, 85 juveniles, and we've really hit the last few years, the juvenile numbers have been really low. And then 78 other cases, including our protective orders, restraining orders, and also the war claims. There might also be some, the guardianships as well. So the total thus far is 1,137. So we're probably tracking for like 14 to 1500 by the end of the, of the fiscal year. You know, there is a great range between the attorneys, and this is because it's the pre, the prejudgment. So generally, all the attorneys, we try to give them this more or less the same caseload, except for, you know, our attorney's fours, they get first degree felonies and we don't give attorney threes and below capital offenses like first degree felonies or homicides. And so the, the fours really have a disproportionate amount of serious felonies. So like if you look here, and Alicia Malnio, she has basically was at 50, 56. We anticipate her moving over to the Elder Justice Center, Advocacy Center in July, so we have, she has not received any cases since April, just so that she could wrap up her criminal cases that she has in front of Judge Paris. So that's why her numbers are low. Everyone else's is pretty much within, within the general range. I mean, I know Mr. Highsmith has large numbers, but he seems to be getting all of the war claims. And up until recently, he's been doing all the protective orders. So what we've done is to reduce the amount of conflicts on the criminal side, as well as to reduce the amount of conflicts on the protective order side. The protective orders and civil restraining orders are going to be handled over the, are basically, we're going to call it our Civil Law Center for now, and they're going to handle the EJC and the protective orders between the two lawyers that will be over there. Somewhere down the road, depending on their workload, we might send over guardianships. So what we've been seeing is that some of our criminal cases, we have to withdraw from because we've obtained a protective order, you know, in the same office. But now that we, we're going to put them at the other side of the, the wall, the conflict wall, we'll be able to hold on to more criminal cases. As well as the protective orders, we've actually had to turn away some victims of protective orders because we represent them on the criminal side, and then we refer them out to Guam Legal or Micronesian Legal. So we plan on reducing the number of conflicts on that side as well, because they'll be at the other side of the, the conflict wall. And Bron Haines has been doing a great job. He's, has a lot of experience doing this when he was with the Tennessee Legal Aid Society, so we're confident that they can pick up that work, especially now that they're, you know, they're going to have two attorneys in that section. And the, the next page, basically 12 of 19, so that this basically shows the actual prejudgment or pre-bench warrant cases. So our case management system, if someone's out on a bench warrant, we, we label on pre-bench warrant, and as they get picked up, we convert it back to pre. So I mean, the cases are, and it's interesting because the longer you are as a judge, the more bench warrants you'll have, just like attorneys, right? We have some bench warrant cases that still belong to Hank Parker. So I mean, obviously, they'll get reassigned once they get picked up, but these are like 20-year-old warrants. And so this shows how many prejudgment cases, and breaks it down by active and ones where bench warrants are outstanding. And so, I mean, basically, we have about 1,171 active prejudgment cases with 758 out on bench warrants. And so the total active caseload is about 1,925 that are prejudgment. And so we broke it down by attorney as well as whether they're pre or pre-bench warrant. And so what we've, also the next page, 13 and 19, these are just stats showing cases where there's no, they haven't been assigned to a courtroom. And these are mainly like citations and notices to appear or war claims, legal guardianship, where the, the work hasn't gotten to the point where a case needs to be opened. And so some of these are also belong to judges who have, are no longer on the bench, so. But they're still listed under certain attorneys that most of them are no longer here. Right. And well, that's about it for, for our stats. So basically, that, those are the numbers for year date and what our current prejudgment caseload is. The only other things we need to work on is, you know, we presented our budget before the legislature. You know, obviously, we're not going to get what we requested, but we hope they'll support us. One of the things the Senator brought up was, you know, looking at our guidelines. We last updated our income guidelines back in 2014, which basically copied the 2011. Basically, our 2011 numbers. So Kat Moyle and our PCs working on presenting basically a new income guideline. And so we're looking at what the feds do and what other jurisdictions are doing. So we hope to present something, proposing a change to our income guidelines in the, in sometime in the near future. But other than that, everything else is going fine.
So Steve, something related in reference to the report. It says, as you are aware, because you're on the Indigent Defense Subcommittee. I have been trying to increase the number of lawyers in the private attorney panel. I did a call out to eight senior partners in private law firms and have gotten very good responses, and, and I'm working with the presiding judge. Once we finalize the additional numbers in the private attorney panel, as responded to by these senior lawyers in the various firms, there, there is going to be a resulting list as to where the trial judges can then appoint. And there's a, a ongoing discussion of what that list is going to look like. Can be all the remaining lawyers, of course, not including those on the private attorney panel and government lawyers, or it can be more narrow. And it's for those who've indicated a, an interest in criminal defense law. And, and there are discussions ongoing within the judiciary for that determination. And, and the private lawyers want, want some input in, in that discussion. But one of the things that have been, was raised by a senior partner, a very respected lawyer in our community, is the public defender's recusal rate, withdrawal rate. And, and I, I need to get some figures from you in reference to the percentage of withdrawals, you know, for the last three years, say, up to the present. Because they, some have indicated that, you know, that's part of the solution. And it's probably part of the problem also. And I, I, there's no way for me to answer that. So if I could get those figures in reference to what is the percentage of withdrawals because of conflicts from cases that they're a public defender, and this also applies to APD are appointed. And also, I know that the public defender has, I think we may have done this at the board level, I'm not really sure, that there are standards in which applies before a lawyer in PD and APD can withdraw. And if not, then tell me that there's, there's no, there's no standard. And how is that being monitored? So, and, and we have a meeting again coming up, which you are a part of. So I'd like for you to provide that information, so we can move on this. Sitting judge.
CJ, can I add the alternate public defender as well? Because the normal process, if PD recuses, it goes to APD and from APD to the private bar. So I like to know, I like to have that applied to the APD as well. Your request.
Yes, and I was going to do that when the reporting attorney for APD, they're, they're up next, I think Annie may be off island. So someone may be sitting, oh, I see Peter here. So Steve, I'm sorry, were you going to say something in response?
No, no, we could get those stats for you probably for the last four or five years, because we have been tracking that to make sure we don't withdraw from an excessive amount of cases. And, you know, we've minimized it a little, but we, now we don't withdraw from every case, like if one particular case involving defendant creates conflict, we get out of that one and then we keep everything else. So I, but we, we definitely have those stats. And you know, John and I, we're, we're both really committed to reducing, you know, the amount of conflict, because ultimately, you know, I mean, we, just like judges have a duty to sit. If you're going to become a public defender, you have a duty to represent individuals, shouldn't be able to pick and choose if you like or don't like the particular facts of a case. So, I mean, I think we're taking it seriously and will, you know, if we need to tighten the ship anywhere, we definitely will. But we'll provide those numbers at the next board meeting.
And Steve, in addition to the numbers, can you give us a list of criteria of the reasons why you are recusing yourself, and that applies to APD? So we can tighten up a little bit, because you know, I've seen some refusals where, oh, we were said of the witness, the witness three or four years ago in a misdemeanor case, you know. So, you know, we need to tighten up the disqualifications a little bit.
Yes, I, I, you know, the board did approve a conflict guidelines a few years back, and so we have been trying to follow that, but you know, we'll, we'll break it out and make sure where we are complying with it. So we'll, we'll get those stats at the next board meeting.
Yeah, and, and I have you as a member of this committee that these senior partners have requested to have engage in some discussion, so. Because there are various options that are being put forth. And, and I just need to complete a couple of more phone calls to follow up on my letters, and then I will bring together the sitting judge, myself, these eight private lawyers, and of course, our president, I'll invite the president to be part of that. And then Steve, you know, we have members of the Indigent Defense Steering Committee. And, and then we're, we're wanting to put forward a written policy that will provide guidance of sitting judges as for guidance in reference to how do the trial judges appoint from outside the private attorney panel. And that's where this debate is going on right now, as to what that second list is, is, is going to look like. And there are various ideas that are being pushed forward. And then, you know, this ultimately will go up to the Supreme Court to have some kind of rule so that our trial judges will be guided accordingly. You know, just take a more, a moment more on this topic. You know, some of the partners are saying, well, we give you two, three associates, then you take our entire firm off the second list. And, you know, there's judicial officers that are not in support of that. So there's going to be a discussion before, you know, we can make a decision. But you triggered my memory when I looked at the statistics and, and also in reference to the you raising the complex issue and also assigning a lawyer. You may want to, you know, I'll, I'll listen to the APD's statistics. But, you know, before you assign Alicia to the Elder Justice Center or transfer her, you know, maybe we can look at the workload of APD and see if that's where, as compared to the Elder Justice Center, we can more balance the resources, because that was the whole purpose of APD, reduce the number of conflicts. And, and before we can go out, we go out to the private attorney panel. And if, if adding lawyers to APD is not going to address the complex issues in a meaningful way, then, you know, we need to re-look at that. But I ask you to hold up on assigning anyone to Elder Justice Center. I ask that we look at the various caseloads and let's try and distribute the resources where it will be most meaningful to the, the work that is, that we all do in providing indigent defense to certain segments of our community. Any, any other questions for Mr. Hattori?
Your honor, I, this is trustee E. Q. B. I just have a question. I just wanted to clarify with the, our executive director. And if I may, your honor. Steve, you mentioned, yeah, if you mentioned something about your stats. Did you state in your stats that filings with the juvenile, with juvenile cases have gone down?
Well, at least the juvenile delinquency, yeah, we've seen it over the last few years.
Okay.
The PINs, I think, are actually going up.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. So, um, thank you, Steve. That was my question, CJ and PJ and trustees, it's just, I'm, and, and just for, I know CJ, you know this, but I serve on the Juvenile and Guardian at Light and Panel right now. I've stayed on because of, you know, my, my commitment to the courts, and I've been on it for for a lot, many, many, many years. I mean, I, I would say two decades at least, but that's why I wanted to clarify, because currently, you know, there's very, if not two or three on the juvenile side, I get appointed every week on a PINS case. So I just needed that clarification, and I would agree with you, your honor, that perhaps we need to really look at this, because I've, in the past six months, because since we, we've been getting out of COVID, I've asked my staff to take a look, and I probably have a, a range of anywhere between 80, 85 to 100 active court appointments. And so it is quite significant. I'm hoping that with your, your honor, CJ, with your efforts with PJ to get people and to try to, you know, look at the PD and APD's, you know, protocol on withdrawal. I mean, it, it, this is kind of daunting on me, but I do my best to try to appear at all the hearings. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record, Steve, that you were only referring to delinquencies and not necessarily other juvenile matters in which it's prompted the Supreme Court to start calling out other attorneys to serve on the, on the panel. Thank you.
And I thank you for that, Q. B. And then in reference to not resigning from the private attorney panel, we've had many lawyers not, you know, take the same position, thinking and have resigned as a result of that. Our clerk of court has requested that I make a concerted effort to address this issue, and I, I sent letters to eight senior partners in the larger law firms in our community. And, and they have all responded, you know, in a very, they of course note the burden that it, that this creates, but they're prepared to come forward and assist the, the judiciary in this manner. And have been writing, offered certain lawyers in their firms with the understanding that the entire firm then will not be in the second list. And this is where we are having a discussion. And so I, I, I just need to complete my, I send out these letters, I follow up with a phone call. I haven't completed those phone calls, but, but that's where I, I already have the names of associates that they're volunteering to add to the list, and so that's very encouraging. I know it's not just been a total rejection.
Thank you, CJ.
But you know, that, the same time, if there is a, they don't agree, what, the firms don't agree. All that means is they get into lists, the alternative lists, and, 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 and they are still subject to appointment. And we're, we're trying to narrow that. I am trying to narrow that list so that those who do end up in the list are capable and have an interest in providing this and, and some experience in doing this work, right? All right, so let's move on. And if there's no questions for our, our executive director, we'll move to the report from the APD. And is this, Peter, are you going to be the one to provide the report?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, Peter, you are recognized.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can we go to page 16? Similarly, Your Honor, with a few caveats, we have our distribution similar to the PD. The caveat is that, of course, Mr. Lemmons is not going to be here long term, so he has lesser cases. Ms. Flynn only gets misdemeanor and family law cases. And then myself being the most recent convert from the AG's office, I do have some challenges when repeat clients come our way and I actually have actual conflicts with them. And so those are the way our numbers are distributed, taking those caveats and factors into consideration and it seems to be pretty similar to the spread that PD has. Likewise, when it comes to conflicts, your honor, we try our level best to avoid conflicting out. We actually had motions, a couple of hearings where we tried to not be conflicted out and it was prosecution that wanted us conflicted out. There are different reasons why they thought that we were conflicted out, even though we felt like we, you know, because of the, the, the age of the relationship or the nature of the relationship, there wasn't an actual conflict. But they, they had a different opinion and so they moved to conflict us out. And so we've had to deal with that. But other than that, we try our level best not to get conflicted out of cases.
What we need, Peter, also as the PJ has indicated, we, we need the statistics of, from APD, you know, for last three to four years in terms of the percentage of cases that APD has withdrawn as compared to the number of cases assigned. And if you, if you can provide us with that figure and therefore we can engage and when Andy comes back, engage in this discussion with Steve, Mr. Hattori there. And look at the resources and if there, now that we have the case reports and if there are fewer cases being charged in, 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 in various categories and attorneys have a lighter load and, and it may make sense to have attorneys then transferred to APD. And we'll look at, of course, and the workload of the APD. And, and, and that will help lower the well, you know, conflicts issues arise that may involve the whole the whole group in reference to APD. So we need to just scrutinize the, the figures and, and the reasons. And also, I, I think we may want to have some type of written policy in terms of the, the withdrawal. The ba- the basis of what an APD lawyer can seek to withdraw. Of course, we have gatekeepers, you know, we have the judicial officers who are gatekeepers to determine whether or not a motion to withdraw is something that should or should not be granted. And, and the prosecution can weigh in. That's, you know, they're right. But it would help us too if we have those figures of Peter.
Yes, your honor, we'll work on that. And likewise, looking forward, as I said, Mr. Lemmons will be leaving us and so the, the cases will be spread. We potentially may have some candidates that may, that we're trying to recruit to come work from off island. That may or may not occur. And then Mr. Brazil may or may not have a gap depending on what happens with the July bar exam.
Okay, all right, very good. And, and Steve, then we can have a discussion regarding the resources and, and if I look to you to be helpful in, in this regard.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, historically, they, we've APD has complete independence from our office, so we don't really transfer employees back and forth between the, those two, they usually have to like apply to transfer. So, you know, I'm not sure. I mean, if, if we could find someone who wants to go over and vice versa, but you know, it's something we could work on.
I think I think we can look at it. I mean, the board can enact policy in reducing the number of lawyers at Public Defender and increasing APD and, and transferring the budget if that's what it takes.
Historically, APD, I mean, APD has six attorney slots right now. They had six attorney slots and they argued because the court was going to have an eighth judge. PDSC, we, we've never really asked for additional attorneys because there is going to be an eighth judge. And so, you know, when that happens, you know, we, we might need it. I mean, it seems like we have a lot of attorneys, but we cover basically ten courtrooms. The two magistrates have court hearings regularly. And then we cover referee angles as well. And so, I mean, I don't think the solution would be to move our attorneys over to APD and I'm not sure APD would if you want that either, but, but we can, you know, we could have that discussion.
All right. I mean, I don't want to take up more time, but there'll be some territorial because I don't want to force it. I, I want, I'm looking for cooperation. And, and in reference to what we're trying to address here. And if you're, you are readily willing to transfer it to the Elder Justice Center, I don't see any reason why you're not wanting to transfer it. And I, I don't want to take any more discussion on this.
Next page, your honor, so that we can, so that everyone can see the fuller picture. Yes. And so these are, are pre-trial cases. Again, the numbers, there's caveats to these numbers because of, you know, who's here more permanently? Who's able to do what kind of cases and who's potentially conflicted out of more clients? So if you have any questions on this page?
I don't.
Okay. And I think that concludes it, your honor, for me.
Okay. All right. Any questions for attorney Peter Santos of APD? All right, there being none, let's move to the next item in the agenda. Which is the report from our Elder Justice Senator Managing Attorney, Attorney Ron Haynes. Ron?
Yes, thank you, your honor, and and board members. We have a chart, I guess it is, there we go. In Exhibit C, this is representing our, our numbers. You can see on, on the top graph are, are numbers beginning this year and the numbers have, you know, they've gone up and down. There's been some movements. In May, our numbers are, are showing as less. There are several reasons for that. One is we have part-time attorney Kat Seguenza and she was on vacation part of that month. Also, I had surgery and was out for a week of that month. So that added to, you know, other time constraints on us. And we moved our office. So we are now moved in here at the, at the EJC building at seven, well, it's next door to the Public Defenders. And you can also see in May on the bottom chart, the outreaches, trainings, conferences and collaborations that we were also involved in. So we had a lot of things going on in addition to the case handling and really full-time attorney, one full-time attorney only for three weeks, and that was myself. June will also see less numbers. And again, you can see on the bottom chart the outreaches because of the senior month. And we did the outreaches in May and there were many going on in June because since we were coming out of COVID. So we've been very involved in those, one conference for three days. The, the training that the court put on, which I will say was excellent. And in, in the middle charts, you can see the overall numbers, the board has always been concerned, as we have been, with folks that are waiting. And you can see from the year ending, fiscal year ending twenty twenty-one that we only have eight clients left to respond. And actually, I believe that number is now zero. But it was at the end of May thirty-first, we still had, had eight left. There are some, a few open cases still. And that is waiting for seniors to provide documents or to finish talking to their families. At any rate, it's, you know, we've met with them, we're waiting for their responses. There you see fiscal year twenty twenty-two as well. All information is out. We have ninety-seven active cases and that's of May thirty-first. Waiting for responses from client. And again, this is something that we reach out to them and, and say, you know, we've got your case still open. Are you interested in coming in or something else happened? And so long as they keep saying we're interested, we keep that case open. And you can see our numbers at fiscal year twenty twenty-one having the closed with services completed a hundred and four. And at the end of May, we were up to two twenty-one. And again, we have, we've been addressing those that have waited. And we have new clients continuing to come in. Plus, with the outreaches we've done in the senior centers, we've had more folks coming in. Those numbers going up a little bit. But we are able to respond to them. If someone were to call today with an urgent issue, we likely could get to it within, within three days, sometimes even faster, depending on the urgency. If it's not urgent, within a month, we can close the case so long as they are moving forward with the things that we ask them to provide. So we are in good shape and you can pretty well read the chart. If you have questions on it, I'll be happy to answer those.
Well, that's very encouraging, even considering that you were out for a week and, and Kat Seguenza, she's mentioned was on vacation. And, and so the work continues to get completed and, and performed. And so it's encouraging that the Elder Justice Center is, is, is moving along. Any questions for Ron Haynes, our attorney Ron Haynes? And, and Ron, is Kat Seguenza still providing services on a part-time basis?
She is. She has a small list that she keeps in and is working through a few at a time. It's not a lot, but she's continuing to help.
And can she take on more cases? Are you able to assign more cases to her?
She probably could if we found it was necessary. Right now, we, you know, we were letting her operate at the speed she wants to. And that's working out for us. We are not having anyone clamoring for attention and saying, you know, when are we going to get this through? That's, that's not occurring. So you know, I, I, as I said, we're kind of letting her work at the pace she wants.
And you're able to handle the workload even with that reduced pace of Kat Seguenza?
Yes, as, as far as the Elder Justice Center goes, yes, I'm able to keep up. Some, some weeks, of course, are pretty overwhelming and others are, are, are go, go smoother. I am covering some of the orders of protection now from the advocacy center. And so that could cause us to move things around sometimes. I had a trial last week and, and have one this week. So, you know, that, that can cause us to put some things on hold. But, you know, we're working towards having Ms. Mullen, you come down here when, when it's deemed appropriate. And we believe that's going to, to help a lot. And, you know, I know it's, we, we are concerned about expanding services. We feel there's great need, but we're we're not prepared, I guess, to ask the board to do that today. But we are working towards that as well, especially when we go to the senior centers, we meet with the seniors, they come up to us and they say, hey, I have this need, I have this need. And, and so we are interested in, in expanding those services pretty soon.
So when you, if the transfer does occur with attorney Mullen, you is there a need to have Kat Seguenza continue to provide service?
Those are decisions I probably don't make and I, I don't want to speak to them. I know Mr. Hattori is the one that kind of addresses those things. And, you know, I didn't do the contract or work on Ms. Quin's contract. So I, I don't honestly don't know the answer to that. As far as need, I, I think we'll be able to, to handle it. And when we expand, well, then that will be the question again.
Well, I'm just looking at the statistics and, you know, the case types. And when you compare it to APD, you know, that doesn't compare in my mind in reference to the number of cases and, and the work that is required. And so I'm just wanting to know in reference to the distribution of resources. The, the board can affect policy and the budget that will affect how cases lawyers are assigned. So I'm looking for cooperation here and not resistance.
Chief, I just want to say that, so we received ARP grant money. So Alicia Manuel, if she transfers, would not be funded at all by general fund revenue. And so, and we've already offered another job position to Stacy Solis, former legal counsel to the so she was going to transition in while Alicia transitions out and it should not affect, you know, our representation of our indigent clients. So, yeah, so it won't impact the general fund at all with Felicia going over. In fact, we're going to hire a less costly attorney with, with this, her position being vacated.
If I may, your honor, as far as handling cases, I, I am able to handle what we currently have. Orders of protection come in and are, are an unknown. We had four calls yesterday, which was a, a lot. And if all four of those go forward, then that will hold up on the on, on the wills and things because they will take priority, of course. So that's kind of the unknown that I have a, a hard time answering that question. As far as the wills itself, the Elder Justice Center, yes, your honor, I can, I can handle that fine.
All right. Any questions, comments for our attorney from Elder Justice Center? There being none. If we can go to the next item on the agenda, is there anything else that we need to discuss? And the deeds of gifts, this was deeds of gift, this was tabled from the last meeting because we had some trustee members absent and before we entertain any discussion regarding expanding the scope of authorized legal activity on the Elder Justice Center to include deeds of gift, we wanted the board members present who can weigh in. And I think it was Ms. Trustee Donna Knatta who wanted to address this topic. Donna, are you wanting to address this topic at this time?
Sir, we're, we're still tabling it for now. And we're, we're still looking to we're still gathering all our information and, and we want to table it until hopefully the next meeting, sir.
Okay. I have no objection. Is there any objection to the request to table this further?
No, no objection.
No. All right. If there are none, if there are no objections, the item E under all this is we'll table them to the next meeting. Anything under public discussion? So there being no other, sorry, Audrey?
CJ, it's, it's, it's me. I just wanted to weigh in and, and mention something if I could on the CJ, it's, it's, it's me, I just wanted to weigh in um and, and mention something if I could on the conflict issue.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, um, who's speaking?
It's, it's John.
Okay, John, sorry, yeah.
CJ, I, I just wanted to um let the trustees know that the, the conflict issue is something that we are taking um very seriously. And, and I hope our stats are gonna um bear that out. You know, there are a number of examples, and I, and one of our attorneys came in um and, and wanted me to. Um, or at least reminded me of just, just what we deal with conflict-wise in, in the actual practice. Um, the A G's recently charged out a ten defendant case. That, that expanded over four different actual cases, and it's obviously. It's obvious, I think, that we're not going to be able to represent all or even most of those people, when, and some of them are going to be our uh clients. So I think that's gonna give just an, an inflated sense of what our conflicts actually are when, are actually are when things are charged out in that fashion. Also, we had a recent case where there were multiple cases charged from an incident that happened in, in the Seo. And eh, I, I recall covering the magistrate's hearing in the, in that case, and. Since the, the witnesses were identified as witness one, two, three, four, et cetera. It was impossible to tell at the magistrate's um hearing whether or not we would end up with a conflict or not. And of course, after we started um getting into who these actual witnesses were. It, of course, showed that we were going to have conflicts. So it, it's an issue that, that we're, we're aware of, that we're working on. Um, I would have to say to Mr. Santos's point. Um, I thought we were gonna be prepared to talk more about, to our attorneys about the standard for withdrawing. Um, but there was a recent D N O that was issued that sort of went contrary to what I think all of our understanding of. Um, when we should move to withdraw on a case is relative to representing sort of stale witnesses. Um, so. I, I, all I mean is that I think this is a complicated issue and it's something that we're taking seriously. And um would look forward to discussing it more with um, with, with you CJ and, and the representatives of the private attorney panel. I would also say that I, when I was looking at the miscellaneous rules on the private attorney panel. Those rules contemplated a ten to fifteen attorney army serving on the private attorney panel. And the current four that I think we have, um, it, we're, it's just woefully underrepresented, so I, I. Just wanted to, to thank you for the efforts and trying to bring up some, some membership there, because it looks like uh that's really needed. Uh, that's, that's what I'd have to say, CJ, thank you.
Thank you, John, for those comments, uh that was very helpful, and I will put you on the. The committee that um is looking at this issue. And um I, I thank you uh for your efforts in this regard. Any other comments or questions?
If I may, I, I, I noticed that we're, we're going down to the adjournment portion. Uh, I just wanted to advise CJ, PJ and the trustees that. I noticed that the next meeting is scheduled for July twenty-sixth, Your Honor, I may not be available. Uh, I am the um Ninth Circuit Rep for the District Court of Guam, and I will be traveling for the conference. Uh, um in Montana around that time. Uh, my only concern, Your Honor, is I do, would like to be present. If, in fact, the, the, this body is going to address the issue on the deeds of gift, I know that the. Trustee um Kanata indicated she would like more time and to continue this, but unless the board. Feels there's a need to have a meeting next month, I, I just either would a- ask that that matter be tabled upon my return. I don't anticipate being back into the office till after August first. And so I just wanted to raise that issue, Your Honor, uh you, both you PJ and the trustees and. Management know that I, I make every effort to try to attend all these meetings. And so I just did not wanna miss out if, in fact, our, our body would be addressing that issue on July. Uh, twenty-sixth, unless, unless the board determines that if, or. Uh, management, it does not have anything uh during that period of time, then I, I would ask that perhaps our. Our um board consider maybe uh moving the meeting to August time period, so that I'm. I, I will certainly be available at that time uh when I return back from my trip, so I just wanted to present that now and give. Uh, you, Your Honors, uh and the trustees an opportunity to uh in, have notice of this. Rather than trying to do it right, right before the, the next meeting, Your Honor.
Alright, I uh certainly um don't wanna have any, uh entertain any discussion if um. Um, you have an interest, um trustee Akubi and, and, and you will not be present. Is there any objection to canceling the July uh meeting? Um, and or is there any pressing need on the part of management and, and that we can? Um, have our next meeting at the um regular uh time period in August, and that would um. Be, Kathy, help me, is that August twenty-third?
We're looking at the twenty-third, but Your Honor, I was gonna ask the board if we can move that maybe to August thirty, they'll be out that week of August twenty-second.
Okay, so um alright, so we will, uh, is there any objection uh for the board not to meet in the? Uh, July, on the July um twenty-sixth timeframe? Anything with manage, management pressing that we need, uh we must have this meeting, Steve?
Your Honor, just the guidelines, but I think we could circulate it and discuss that in August, that's fine.
Uh, which guidelines are we talking about?
Oh, uh, the income guidelines, one of the senators recommended, we, we haven't touched it since two thousand fourteen, well. Two thousand eleven, actually.
Alright, so can you uh have it prepared and disseminated? Uh, in July and, and for us to discuss in August? Because the, 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 the budget doesn't come into effect until October first. Uh, and that's what you prompted this discussion, is that, is that it?
Uh, yeah, basically, so as long as uh we, we just advise them that we'll update it. And so it could wait till um August.
Alright, um. Jackie, any objection to us uh moving the meeting to August?
No objection.
Okay, and I don't see the PJ on anymore. So, alright, so um, if there are no objection, then uh we will not have the meeting. As regularly scheduled on July twenty-sixth. And for the August uh meeting as requested, um any objection to moving our August meeting to August thirtieth? Uh, twenty twenty, at the regular.
No objection, no objections, Your, Your Honor.
Alright, alright, there being uh no objection, the, the next uh meeting of the uh Public Defender Service Corporation Board of Trustees. Will be on Tuesday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two at twelve thirty P M. There being no further matters before um the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll, I'll.
Alright, it's been moved by Attorney Ekubi, and it's seconded by Trustee Donna Kanata. There being no objection, uh the board meeting is um duly adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Your Honor, and a happy Fourth of July, Your Honor and everyone, thank you for the lunch.
So juice mossy.
Thank you.
Thank you.